Morning, I declare that a quorum is formed. So for the morning special finance committee meetings, I now call it to order. The meeting will be from nine P M, nine A M to twelve forty P M. There are two sessions. The purpose of the special meetings is to examine the estimates twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five government. We want to make sure that all the required funds will not exceed what is necessary for implementing policy, approved policies. And I must remind members that all questions with directly related to the estimates. And if you wish to follow up on written replies of the administration, please quote the reply serial number on the top right corner of the question. For example, H X B O O one. If members not able to ask follow up questions on written replies today, you may submit your supplemental questions writing, but these questions just be related to the written replies and please submit the reply by the end of the meeting today to the secretary. Now, I would like to welcome Professor Lo Chong Ma, Secretary for Health and his team to answer questions on health. Professor Lo will make some opening remarks. Chairman, honorable members, when an aging population, the increasing prevalence of chronic diseases and the rapid development of medical technology, the demand for medical services has been growing. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, the estimated recurrent expenditure on healthcare is one hundred nine point five billion dollars, accounting for eighteen point nine percent of the recurrent government expenditure and increase of four point six percent compared with the revised recurrent expenditure in twenty twenty three to twenty four. New and additional resources available in this financial year are mainly used for the following enhanced or newly introduced public healthcare services. Firstly, the government will continue to provide funding for the hospital authority, H A, to meet projected demand growth based on the triennium funding arrangement agreed in nineteen twenty seventeen, having regard to population growth rates and demographic changes. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, a recurrent subvention of ninety three point five billion dollars will be provided to H A, representing an increase of about two percent as compared with the twenty twenty three to twenty four revised estimate. The H A, H A will use the funding to optimize a number of its healthcare services, which include enhancing the clinical services for patients suffering from diseases such as cancer, providing additional hospital beds, operating theatres and endoscopy sessions, enhancing service planning and commissioning redeveloped or expanded hospitals and community health centers, improving patients' experience, operational workflow, surgical outcome and patient safety through the application of advanced technology and the development of smart hospitals and attracting and retaining staff through providing additional promotion opportunities, enhancing various training programs, et cetera, to alleviate manpower shortage. In twenty twenty four to twenty five, the government will allocate to the Department of Health, D H, an additional time limited provision of about two hundred fifty four million dollars. The provision is allocated for meeting the cash flow requirement under the elderly healthcare voucher scheme, E H V S, and for facilitating D H engagement of additional manpower to tackle the increasing workload for implementing various enhancement measures of E H V S, including the elderly healthcare voucher, E H V C, E H V C V, Greater Bay Area pilot scheme. Meanwhile, the D H will also continue to strengthen its existing services by implementing human papilloma virus vaccination catch up program and continuing to implement the vaccination subsidy scheme, the seasonal influenza vaccination school outreach program and the residential care home vaccination program. Having regard to the National Fourteenth Five Year Plan, which has indicated clear support for Hong Kong's development into an international innovation and technology hub, as well as the development plan for Shenzhen Park of He Tao, Shenzhen Hong Kong Science and Technology Innovation Cooperation Zone announced in August last year. The Hong Kong S A R government highlighted in the twenty twenty three policy address that it will enhance the current approval and registration mechanism of drugs and medical devices, develop a health and medical innovation hub, move towards the primary evaluation approach and concurrently promote the development of clinical trials. Following the accession to the International Council for Harmonization of Technical Requirements for Pharmaceuticals for Human Use as an Observer under the name of Hong Kong China on the thirty first of October last year and establishment of the new one plus mechanism for registration of new drugs since the first of November, the Hong Kong S A R government plans to set up a preparatory office for the Hong Kong Centre for Medical Products Regulation under D H in the first half of this year, so as to study the potential restructuring and strengthening of the regulatory approval regimes for medicine, medical devices, medical technology in the long run. The Hong Kong S A R government also plans to establish the Greater Bay Area International Clinical Trial Institute in the He Tao area by the end of this year to provide a one stop clinical trial support platform for medical research institutions to further enhance the capacity and efficiency of clinical trials in Hong Kong and transforming our city into a leading clinical trial hub in Asia. The institute will facilitate cooperation with the clinical trial networks in the mainland, in particular the G B A, and coordinate the clinical trial work between the two places to comply with national and international standards. On healthcare manpower, to cope with the future demand for healthcare manpower, the government has so long encouraged U G C universities and self financing post secondary institutions to offer training programs in healthcare professions. In the twenty twenty three twenty four academic year, the total number of training places for various healthcare professionals exceeded six thousand six hundred, a significant increase of more than fifty percent from about four thousand four hundred in the twenty sixteen to seventeen academic year. Earlier on, the government has introduced the Nurses Registration Amendment Bill twenty twenty three and Dentists Registration Amendment Bill twenty twenty four to the council and announced in the twenty twenty three policy address that the government will explore expand amending the supplementary medical professions ordinance on the premise of maintaining professional standards to create new pathways for admitting non locally trained nurses, dentists and supplementary medical professionals to practice in Hong Kong so as to meet the rising demand for medical services. Primary healthcare is an integral part of the entire healthcare system, accounting for about twenty percent of the expenditure on public healthcare. The government put forward the primary healthcare blueprint at the end of twenty twenty two and is progressively taking forward various recommendations of the blueprint over the short medium and long term. The government launched a three year chronic disease co care pilot scheme last year, extending E extended E H V S to cover more healthcare professionals and allowed shared use of vouchers between spouses and launched the E H C V pilot reward scheme. The government will continue to advocate the concept of family doctor for all, as at the twenty ninth of February twenty twenty four, there are three thousand seven hundred doctors enrolled in the primary care directory. The government will also gradually reposition the general outpatient clinics to focus on taking care of low income persons and the socially disadvantaged groups and orderly and migrate some primary healthcare services under D H in an orderly manner, including women health centers and elderly health centers to the primary healthcare system. The government has begun exploring the setting up of a community drug formulary and planning of the community pharmacy program. It is also actively planning for the establishment of the primary healthcare commission. Furthermore, to provide greater convenience for Hong Kong elderly persons, it has come promulgated in the policy address twenty twenty three that the E H C V G B A pilot scheme will be implemented this year to extend the vouchers coverage to include suitable medical institutions in the G B A. The government has announced in February this year the list of seven medical institutions selected for inclusion in the pilot scheme. These institutions are expected to launch the reference arrangements under the pilot scheme starting from the third quarter of this year. The government is committed to promoting the development of Chinese medicine C M in Hong Kong, so as to enable Hong Kong to play a more significant role under the construction of the C M Highlands in the G B A, thereby assisting the national drive for C M to go global. The key policy initiatives include, one, the two flagship institutions, namely the Chinese Medicine Hospital and the government Chinese Medicines Testing Institute, are expected to commence services in phases from the end of next year. Two, enhancing the functions of the Chinese medicine unit. The Commissioner for Chinese Medicine Development, who would assume office on the twentieth next month, will collaborate with the C M sector to formulate Chinese medicine development blueprints to map out the vision and strategy for children development. Three, further expanding and strengthening the integrated Chinese Western medicine services, boosting the establishment of C M talent pool, refining the funding arrangement of the Chinese Medicine Development Fund. And four, promoting scientific research and standard setting for Chinese medicines testing, including the launch of the digital herbarium for Chinese medicines last month. The government has announced in the twenty twenty four to twenty five budget an increase of tobacco duty on cigarettes by eighty cents to three dollars, three point three oh six dollars per steak, following a raise of sixty cents in the previous year to ensure that cigarette prices are maintained at a certain level. The government will continuously review the effectiveness of tobacco control measures as a whole and the pace of future adjustments in tobacco duty with a view to achieving the target of seventy five percent duty proportion as recommended by the World Health Organization. Preliminary findings of the systematic household survey conducted by the Census and Statistics Department on smoking pattern in twenty twenty three show that there are indeed signs of a decline in smoking prevalence after the increase in tobacco duty last year, with preliminary data indicating that the smoking prevalence further dropped from ten point two percent in twenty nineteen and nine point five percent in twenty twenty one to nine point one percent last year. It is evident from such a decline that the various tobacco control measures, including increasing tobacco duty, are effective. The government will continue to take forward tobacco control measures with a view to achieving a smoking prevalence of seven point eight percent as promulgated under the twos Hong twenty five twenty five strategy and action plan to prevent and control non communicable diseases in Hong Kong by the end of next year. The Customs and Customs Department has stepped up enforcement in combating illicit cigarette activities over the past two months by mounting large scale anti illicit cigarette operations across the territory and will continue to take stringent enforcement actions in all fronts through risk assessments and intelligence analysis. D H will also step up enforcement in combating illegal tobacco advertisements, including conducting joint operations against the distribution of tobacco advertisements in public housing assets. The government conducted the vibrant, healthy and tobacco free Hong Kong public consultation on tobacco control strategies last year. We're exploring the rolling of different tobacco control measures in the face approach and with the aim to make Hong Kong a smoke free, healthy and vibrant city. The government has introduced into the legislature council the Dentists Registration Amendment Bill twenty twenty four, which, among other things, proposes to create new pathways for admitting qualified, non locally trained dentists to practice in Hong Kong and to modernize the regulatory framework for dental hygienists and dental therapists with a view to increasing dental manpower in Hong Kong as well as enhancing the overall standards of dental professionals to better serve the citizens. The government increased the number of training places for dental hygienists and dental therapists and privatization sponsorship while introducing new initiatives to strengthen public mental services. Such initiatives include the enhancements of the Healthy T collaboration program and the primary dental co care pilot scheme for adolescents. That's my brief introduction. I and my colleagues are happy to answer questions from members. Thank you, Professor Lo, for your very detailed briefing. Now, seventy members of, twenty one members asked to speak. We have just over ninety minutes left. So you should all be able to ask questions, but it depends on whether you follow strictly the time limit of four minutes for questions and answers. Let me read out the list, so you could then know. Lillian Quoc, Jeffrey Lam, Cheung Ho Yum, Miss Regina, Adrian Ho Holden, Chow, Deputy Chairman, Professor Chan Wing Kong, Chan Ho Fong, Lee Chan Karen, Chan Kim Paul, Kingsley Wong, Conny Lam, Chan Pu Lam, Leitong Kok, Lam Chum Sing, Priscilla Lung, Dorin Kong, Tong Lee Je, Edward Lung, Joffy Chan, Tenka Piu and Mister Chan Han Pan. First, Miss Lillian Quoc. Thank you. I would like to follow up on my own question, oh nine oh. Now, from the reply, we can see that for, we see the number of A D H D patients. And in the particular age group, there is a high number. As for adults, there is a drastic drop in number for those who've received treatment. So for those aged eighteen or above, that means very few of them receiving treatment for A D H D and so on. So have you tried to find out why there is this phenomenon? A second question, if that's the case, does it mean for adults, maybe there's room for us to review, providing more support to them? And would there be any programs in future to help adult A D H D patients? And then next is oh two nine. Mental health services, we see continuous drop in manpower level. So if that's the case, do you have any plans to increase manpower? With a drop in manpower level, would you consider hiring case managers and nurses? Or how are you going to tackle this issue? Because we see a drop in manpower at the same time, mental health is a concern of the community. So what are you doing about that? Thank you.
On two fronts, thank you. Regarding medical services and manpower, I'd like to ask Doctor Tong Niko to take these questions. Doctor Tong Niko, thank you, Chairman. Indeed, we attach great importance to mental health. In the past one to two years, there's been a serious wastage of doctors and nurses. Through measures, we have recruited non locally registered doctors from overseas. So there's an improvement in the manpower of nurses and doctors. Miss Lillian Quoc just now asked about psychiatrists that are trained overseas and we have invited them to come to Hong Kong to work. Regarding the ratio of case managers, there's also an improvement. You may remember last year, we wrote out a series of measures, including improving the ratio of case managers. The figures are going up. It's improving. Regarding A D H D, it's common in children. When they grow up, they face different problems. For example, when they are young, they face problems at school, interpersonal relationships and so on. Some patients need to undergo different treatment, including medications and other support treatments. When they come of age, their situation has changed. For example, when they grow up, they face different problems, like problems at work and their conditions have changed. So in adult psychiatric medical care, we will continue to follow up on this area. We will also continue to enhance psychiatric medical manpower. In Kuai Chung Hospital, it's being redeveloped. A project is going on. So in terms of software and hardware, we will continue to improve these aspects in relation to mental health patients. There's a lack of support for A D H D patients aged eighteen or below, so I hope you will look into this situation. Mister Joffrey Lam, Doctor Tong Niko mentioned an improvement in manpower, but still, we are lacking manpower. So I hope you will work on different fronts, including importation of doctors. Can you relax the requirements? I understand you need to think about monitoring. And doctors need to meet certain requirements when they are imported into Hong Kong. In the past few years, during Covid, despite the lack of manpower, the Health Bureau has been doing a great job. Things were difficult. Just now, the secretary mentioned going forward, how we can transform all hospitals into smart hospitals, including advanced technologies, equipment and so on. Chips might be involved. As you know, in Hong Kong and in the mainland market, many chips are not allowed to be imported into Hong Kong or into the mainland market. In this area, do you have any second or third measure? There are many apparatuses in the mainland market that meets the international standard. I'm not sure if you have sufficient financial resources, but it does not seem, it does not seem that you have enough. But then you're still spending a lot maintaining the makeshift hospitals. So if you spend the money on hospitals or medical equipment, that will be even more effective. Just now, as I heard from you, it was as much as millions of dollars. Can we make better use of these money? I'd like to hear from the secretary. Secretary on two fronts, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the hospital authority, that is the importation of doctors and e hospitals or smart hospitals, I'd like to ask Doctor Tong Niko to answer these questions regarding makeshift hospitals. I'd like to ask Mister Thomas Chan, Permanent Secretary, to give you a response. Doctor Tong Niko, please. Regarding employing non locally trained doctors, we have been very active in this regard. There's been great improvement or progress. Mister Joffrey Lam cares much about quality and our work, so we will tread cautiously in selecting suitable doctors to come to Hong Kong. The results have been satisfactory. As at end March, one hundred and thirty eight non locally trained doctors have come to Hong Kong. As at the end of this year, the number will rise to two hundred. They come from overseas, the mainland, G B A or even other cities. There are also professionals coming from these regions to Hong Kong. I believe they will be beneficial to the situation in Hong Kong. Regarding smart hospitals, we don't rely on one single supplier. Members mentioned software as well as hardware. In the H A, many systems are developed by our team. As for artificial intelligence, A I, we use open source. So we are well aware of the problem mentioned by member. We also use hardware from the mainland as well as the manpower from the mainland market. Regarding C I F, community isolation facilities. Well, Mister Thomas Chan, thank you, Chairman. The Health Bureau, the D O H and the H A are using the emergency hospitals in the Loop area or in He Tao. In Northland Tao, infrastructures and in the Panis Bay infrastructure, we reserved these facilities for measures against the epidemic. If need be, we will use these facilities. Regarding other community isolation facilities, we will make arrangements for these facilities. We will release these facilities or develop them in situ. We will, in a progressive, progressive manner, announce the details. Before we change these facilities to other uses, the D H will be responsible for cleaning and security. It's about three point seven five million dollars per month. Well, Mister Joffrey Lam, do you know you, I mean, your questions are too long. The administration did not have sufficient time to answer you. Briefly, well subdivided units are very serious in Hong Kong, so can we turn community isolation facilities into housing for them? Next, Miss Chan Ho Yen. I'd like to follow up on oh one one oh one three and oh oh seven about general outpatient clinic quota. The administration and the hospital authority also said that the A and E department is full. Citizens have to wait hours. So non emergency cases patients are appealed to use general outpatient clinics. For G O P C, on holidays, I'd like to know more about the establishment, the manpower in this area. The reason why I asked about these statistics is from your replies regarding night shift in G O P C last year until December. For example, Island West, Kowloon East, night shift G O P C were full. So when you asked the patients to turn to G O P C, the quota had been maxed out. We are anticipating that there will be more people in twenty twenty four to twenty five. You are also expecting more and more people using these G O P C services. In light of this, does the administration have any plan to increase the supply of medical services in the G O P C? And you even asked these citizens to avoid going to the A and E department. So what is your measure? When you are expecting an increase in the number of patients in twenty twenty four to twenty five, doesn't mean that it will be even more difficult to reserve a place in the G O P C? That also concerns the manpower problems and other replies I just now mentioned. There are many people who leave the profession not because of retirement. Actually, for new recruits, they are not very much well experienced. So I'd like to know the level of experience these people have. When we only recruit fresh graduates, can we really solve the manpower shortage? Will it solve the problem? Secretary, I'd like to first answer the question about non retirement wastage rate. Most of these people leave the government for the private sector. That's about the imbalance between the government, I mean, the public sector and the private sector. We understand the issue we are facing, that is a manpower shortage. The situation is improving. The wastage figures is on a decrease. For non retirement wastage, figures show that they are between thirty and thirty nine. This is worrying. Most people leaving the public healthcare system leave the, I mean, they used to be consultant or A C. They are not yet the retirement age, but then they are also above forty, for example, between forty and fifty. So we are worried that when young doctors become specialists, they will leave the public healthcare system. This is the issue we are facing. We want to encourage young specialists to stay in the public healthcare system to serve Hong Kong. With more experienced doctors retiring, we need to train enough young doctors. We have, for example, five hundred and ninety doctors graduating and serving the public healthcare system, so we need to train these young doctors. More total training is conducted in the public healthcare sector, and that is exactly why we need to support the public healthcare system. Doctor Tong Niko, regarding the first question, please be brief. Member asked about G O P C. We understand the demand is huge. So in the past few years, we've been increasing the number of quota. We deploy more manpower to work in G O P C. Manpower resources are tight. It's difficult to deploy more doctors to the G O P C. As I mentioned, there's a decrease in the number of non retirement wastage rate. Some eighty percent of doctors continue to stay behind and serve the public healthcare sector after retirement. We will continue to monitor the situation. Regarding quota by day or by night, we will also try to make arrangements according to the needs in different districts. Mrs. Regina Eve, I'd like to follow up on oh seven five. That is about limited registration and special administration. I'm glad to see that between twenty twenty four and twenty four, there's been an increase in the figures. But I'd like to talk about the table in your reply. But I'd like to talk about the table in your reply. When you write China, please say mainland China. You shouldn't lump them together. Regarding the increase, is it because the HA has started to recruit from overseas? What is the result of the recruitment? I can also see eighteen in China. Are they from Shenzhen, the medical school? Can you elaborate on that? Secretary? Dr. Tong Niko. Thank you, Chairman. In a past year or so, with resumption of normal travel in Hong Kong, we have been recruiting doctors from different regions or places, especially through the new registration system. The limited registration system gives us much room to recruit more doctors. For example, in the UK, Australia, and in North America, many people study medicine in these areas, and recently, we also tried to attract medical school graduates from mainland. So we contact Sun Yat-sen University and Fudan University, and we want to recruit graduates from these universities. Through different talent scheme, some doctors in the GPA also come to Hong Kong to work in Hong Kong, for example, midwives and so on. So we are expecting an increase. Thank you.
Mrs. Yip. H H B O seven seven, again, a question from me is about district health centers. I thank the administration for providing the various figures. Now, for the Islands District, where is the DHC? Because the usage rate is low, and you know, the islands cover a huge area. Secretary? Commissioner for Primary Healthcare, Dr. Pang, will take the question. Thank you. Dr. Pang, please.
Yes. The Islands DHC is not in the Urban Air District. It is in an indigenous village. And we are actively looking for other locations, expand the DHC network. In fact, you know, this is actually transition arrangement with many of the DHCs. We're trying to look for permanent locations, so there's room for providing more services. Chairman, the doctor can answer me where the DHC is, in which island, please? You know, islands cover a huge area. Changchau has the largest population in the islands, but then Tongchung North is seeing the fastest population growth. There are new housing estates, so you should set up DHCs in those places. If you put it in Lema Island, it serves little purpose. Well, it's in Tongchung. Actually, the one now is in Tongchung, Halingpei. And you know, for the islands, it doesn't just cover the land town, unless it covers various outlying islands. So we are actively considering the population growth pattern to decide where we put the DHCs. Yes, I know that well, of course, it's my constituency, but I don't think you're choosing the right location. Please find a better location. Because there are many housing estates there, and we're seeing population growth that is becoming a new, it's a new town, actually, so please consider that. So please consider Mrs. Yip's suggestion. Mr. Adrian Ho.
O seven O, that's my own question about community isolation facilities. The reply is that for all CIFs, they are either put in to stand by or they are, you know, turned into other users. So my question is about releasing these facilities for other users. You should make a new plan, and there must be short-term uses, because every month you're spending over three million dollars to maintain these facilities. It doesn't make sense. For example, for the Kai-Tech Community Isolation Facility, Kai-Tech CIF, have you released the site to the Refund Bureau for any follow-up arrangement or assessment? Secretary, for CIFs or the so-called makeshift hospitals? The Deputy Financial Secretary is handling a matter involving various departments and bureau, because many facilities, including the Kai-Tech CIF, we expect that they'll be turned into other non-medical uses. So that's why other policy bureau need to be involved, so we could make use of these facilities as soon as possible. Any follow-up?
No. Next, Mr. Houdun Chow, Deputy Chairman. My question, I'd like to ask about O eight O. That's a question asked by Reverend Peter Kun, but I'd like to follow up on that. For dental outpatient clinics, I've been following on that for some time. Now, before, there's overnight waiting for slot. But then last year or two years ago, we went to Tsim Muen for a visit, and now you have made new arrangements, so people don't need to queue overnight to get a disc. For the dental outpatient clinic, dental clinics and the usage and so on, now you don't, the working does not see tooth extraction as a way of ensuring dental health. Now, in the policy address, it's been announced that NGOs will be approached to provide dental services so that we could increase the quota. Now, you do not consider tooth extraction to be a part of your overall goal. So would you then take out tooth extraction service, and then this could be provided by NGOs, perhaps? Or will it be the case that in future, the dental clinics will still provide tooth extraction, but then it will be providing less of this service, or rather you will shift the service to NGOs? Or are you not going to put resources in the tooth extraction service, because some elderly people do need that? So can you clarify what the arrangement is? Mr. Chen, Permanent Secretary, will take the question. Mr. Thomas Chan. For the so-called dental GP sessions, it's actually to provide emergency services. It's to handle emergency cases such as tooth extraction or pain treatment, doesn't include other dental services. And then, in the second half of the year, we're going to embark on a plan to work with NGOs. We would like to target the disadvantaged groups, in particular those with limited means. We would like to provide a wider range of emergency services, and it won't just include tooth extraction. If necessary, maybe scaling and tooth filling services could be provided, because this is also needed by the disadvantaged. So there will be a range of preventive care services. Yes, I see the the point. I think the principle is on this, is right. But you are going to, you say, work with NGOs, that's a good, right move. But what about the free emergency dental service, generally referred to as general public sessions, GP sessions? Are you going to keep the tooth extraction services in your GP sessions, or are you going to leave that to NGOs? Now, our clinics now provide free emergency dental service, but there is a shortage of manpower in DHM. I think the vacancy rate is some thirty percent. So that's why there are limits as to how far we can go in providing the free emergency dental service. So we want to keep the service, at the same time, we want to work with NGOs, so we can provide better service. The aim is that is to double the number of places for free emergency dental service to be provided by NGOs. Professor Chen Winkong.
I'd like to follow up on O three four and O three five. Both questions are asked by myself. In twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, four hundred and seventy million dollars are set aside for the reference work. That's an increase of seventy-nine million dollars compared to the year before. Now, in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, the total estimate budget is ninety-five point four billions for healthcare services. So for Chinese medicine development, it only accounts for about point four, point four five percent of the total healthcare expenditure. So it's just a drop in the bucket. How do you arrive at the budget of four hundred and twenty million dollars? What are the factors considered? Would you consider increasing funding for this, for promoting the development of Chinese medicine? And then, O three five, we can see that in the past five years, we're seeing an increase of patients seeking Chinese medicine service at the reference Chinese medicine clinics by substantial number, over, an increase over a hundred thousand each year. But then there's no increase in the number of Chinese medicine clinics. So have you reviewed the situation? Can the existing Chinese medicine clinics and research center, training research centers, CMCTRs meet the needs of the public? Now, in reply to an oral question I asked at the council, you said you will reposition some of the, you relocate some of the, or provision some of these Chinese medicine clinics, so that you could increase the capacity. So what's the progress? Professor Lo.
Now, CM development is not just limited to services provided by the HA. HA accounts only for a small portion of CM services. So if you criticize the government for not investing enough in CM development just based on the budget for the HA, that's not fair. Because we have a varied approach in promoting CM development. Perhaps Mr. Edili, Deputy Secretary for Health, will explain in detail what we're doing with promoting CM development. Well, outside of HA, we are investing heavily in CM development. The most obvious example is the elderly healthcare vouchers scheme. In private CM clinics, we see more than one billion dollars spent there. So that's actually the second highest amount spent with healthcare service providers under the voucher scheme. So in addition to the four hundred plus million dollars, we have another five hundred billion dollars. So in total, we have a fund of one billion dollars for promoting CM development. And there is another major project coming online, coming into place, that's the Chinese Medicine Hospital. And it will be commissioned, starting from the end of twenty twenty-five in phases. So we are increasing our investment in CM development with the commissioner in post, and then we will map out a blueprint for CM development. Professor Chen. Now, I must stress that I did not criticize the government's effort in promoting CM development. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chen Hockfeng.
Two, I'd like to follow up with two replies, O one three and O one four. O one three is my question. In the reply, the government said that for the Prince Philip Dental Hospital is going to roll out a pilot scheme for patients with dental emergency needs. So the hospital students will provide emergency treatment to patients. So how many places will be available each year for these patients? And who, how many are eligible for the scheme? And would you have an assessment on the ratio of those who may not be eligible? Now, people could also, could of course, go to Shenzhen to seek dental treatment. But for some elderly persons, they're not as mobile, they can't go across the boundary. So can you provide more services for the elderly at the Prince Philip Dental Hospital? That's my first question. And then, O one four, the question is asked by Miss Rebecca Chen. Now, the HA wants to retain talent, so you have a home loan interest subsidy scheme, and there are one thousand applications already approved. So how much do you set aside for this purpose? And the HA also rolls out a scheme for non-locally trained doctors to join HA. There are two hundred such doctors now, I believe. Now, can we force the sense of belonging of these doctors to stay in Hong Kong? Would the scheme cover them?
Thank you. Regarding dental services, I will ask Mr. Thomas Chan to take these questions. Regarding the training of doctors, I will ask Dr. Tong Niko to answer member. Mr. Thomas Chan, thank you, Chairman. Prince Philip Dental Hospital, PPDH, is a teaching hospital for dental services. It takes in patients and provides training to dentistry students in Hong Kong U. The facilities can be used to provide dental treatment services. So we are discussing with PPDH expanding services to be provided to the public so that they can take more patients for patients that are suitable. I mean, PPDH should take patients with mild conditions. They will become so-called teaching patients. We are discussing with PPDH. Is it the case that when these are not suitable, they will not be provided with services? Would that be the case? We need to consider the number of places provided by PPDH. We are discussing with Architectural Services Department, ASD, to see how we can expand the usable space of PPDH in order to enlarge the area of dental clinics, so that we can provide more services. Dr. Tong Niko. Regarding members' questions, that is the enhanced home loan interest subsidy scheme. The interest rate is low, so we have changed the scheme, and there can be home loan interest. In fact, the amounts is in billions, so we have already made relevant arrangements. Regarding how we can enhance the sense of belonging in Hong Kong or in the workplace, the HA has been recruiting non-locally trained doctors, so they have experience in this regard. Be it salary, training, they are on the same path with local doctors. They may need more time to settle into Hong Kong. So they may need to know more about the operation of hospital, the healthcare system in Hong Kong, and so on. For those who come from overseas places, we will also take care of their other personal needs, such as accommodation, the education of their own children, and so on. Next, Mr. Lee Chen Kang. I'd like to ask about the question O three six, that is about Chinese medicine. There's an application, eighteen CM clinics, citizens can register. I'd like to ask, after the rollout of the app, it's quite well received. Many people register for services in the clinics. Can we incorporate that to I am Smart? So that citizens will find it easier to register for Chinese medicine services. Otherwise, if there are too many different apps for different services, it will be quite troublesome for citizens to access these services. it will be quite troublesome for citizens to access these services. Regarding question oh eight two. I'd like to follow up on the serious manpower shortage of dentists. I understand you have a full subsidy for dental therapists and other dental workers, but that will take at least one year. What is the amount of subsidy? Can the duration of the scheme be lengthened regarding reply oh uh one eight one? Regarding drug register. Can I have information about the um more information about the drug formulary? It's been in place for some time. Biotechnology is very common. Some terminal illnesses can be treated in other areas such as the U, um U S A or so on. So I'd like to know whether these clinical drugs can be put into the hospital authority drug formulary, H A D F.
Thank you, Secretary. Thank you. I'd like to ask Deputy Secretary to respond to this question, that is about e-Health and eighteen C M clinics.
Thank you, Chairman. E-Health will become an integrated service platform for different medical services. Information can be accessed on different platforms. For example, information about Chinese medicine clinics can be found on um H A Go. So we are providing connection, easy connection to integrate services or information about services in H A Go or in e-Health. So people will be able to access the services in H A Go. We have a five-year e-Health plus services. And this will be part of our five-year plan. Does that include Chinese medicine clinics? For C M clinic and C M providers, they will be incorporated into the e-Health plus services. Regarding dental care workers, I'd like to ask my colleague, Miss Ellen Mac, to answer member. Regarding dental hygienists and dental therapists, we provide a full amount subsidy. After increasing the training quota, we will take stock of the response or the situation. Ninety-five. I mean, we have a quota of ninety-five. And it will go up to one hundred and eighty-five in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. We will take stock of the response. We will carry out a review. We will also see the employment situation of these ancillary dental workers in the private market. They need to work in the public sector for at least one year. We will review the scheme. When there is wrong, we can, I mean, we will enhance the situation. Well, when you're asking these people to work in the public sector for one year and then they will leave for the private sector, that won't help much. Secretary.
Well, that is the standard we use, but of course, when we sponsor or subsidize these people to further their studies, should they work for us for one year or ten years? Well, I mean, they can, they will be asked to work in the public sector for one year in order to make up for the subsidy. Drug register is different from drug formulary. For drug register or drug registry. That is for new drug reg. That is for new drug registration. When a drug is marketed, is available in the market, whether the H A will procure it and provide it to patients, that's another matter. So we need to answer your question on two different fronts. Doctor Ronald Lamb can give you more information. Well, I'm afraid we have a radio overrun. I hope you will follow up on these matters after the meeting. Mister Chan Kim Po, I'd like to ask about Chinese medicine, oh one seven. Integrated Chinese and we, western me, medicine services have been expanded to seventeen hospitals. I think it shows the determination of the administration to enhance the provision of Chinese medicine services. I'd like to know whether it affects manpower provision. Will it lengthen the um the um follow-up services of citizen? Regarding tobacco duty, many people are using smoking cessation services. That is twenty-six thousand and twenty-eight thousand. The success rate has increased from twenty percent to sixty percent. Have you looked into why the difference is so great? Secretary. For the first question, I'd like to ask Doctor Tony Ko to answer. That's about integrated Chinese and west, western medicine services. Regarding tobacco cessation services, Doctor Ronald Lamb will give you more information. Doctor Tony Ko. Regarding integrated Chinese Western medicine services, I S W M. In the past year, we have been promoting I C W M services. We see a huge demand. The response has been great. For the manpower in eighteen C M clinics. When patients are discharged, if they would like to have Chinese medicine services, they will also go back to the hospital. In the past, we focused on clinical treatment in outpatient clinics. So if we can take forward hospitalized Chinese Western medicine services, that is indeed a great improvement. When patients are discharged, they can be treated in the general outpatient clinic, G O P C. As to the reason why we can make enhancements, I thank the um relevant administration and um Guangdong Health Commission. We have a scheme. That is why we can make improvements in such a short period of time. Reply two one four. D H Cs have been providing smoking cessation services. The D O H has been sponsoring many N G Os to provide free smoking cessation services. There are medication services as well as Chinese acupuncture services. As member mentioned, the success rate differs. I mean, it varies. We have drawn reference from overseas experience. In general, fifty-two weeks of smoking cessation services. We can say that it's um effective if the success rate is between ten percent and thirty percent. We can also see there's medical evidence. People actually need more than one method in order to quit smoking. When one plan is not effective, they may need to turn to another plan. There are different methods. So we want to provide different resources to citizens who would like to quit smoking. We want to provide well-rounded support for them. As for smoking prevalence. We can see that the smoking cessation services is effective. Next, Mister Ken Zhi Wong. Thank you, Chairman. I'm more concerned about the attrition rates, I mean, the wastage rate of specialists. It's in reply one nine four. I can see the efforts of the H A. There's a decrease in the attrition rate for cardio, eye and anesthesia. The attrition rate are fourteen point five percent, nine point six percent and nine percent. For consultants in these specialists, the wastage rate is as high as twenty percent. In cardio and pulmonary specialist, seven of the doctors who left the services were consultants. So have you looked into the reasons behind this phenomenon? Do you have contract measures to deal with the serious short, um the wastage rate? Will you promote doctors, increase the salary of doctors and so on? Many doctors said that working in the H A is stressful. Job satisfaction is also a factor. That will also lead them to leave the public sector. How can we ease the stress of doctors? How can we promote their job satisfaction and measures? Secretary, will Doctor Tony Ko take the question? For um cardio thoracic surgery, training is intense, so there are not many such doctors or specialists. The wastage rate may, may already be very high when even a small number of these specialists leave the service. This is my preliminary explanation. I will invite Miss Doctor Tony Ko to take the following questions. Thank you, Chairman. We are concerned about the overall manpower shortage and wastage. Member mentioned promotion. We will provide subsidies in order to provide um pecuniary allowances or compensations for them on training. We devote much resource to provide local training or overseas training. We also procure advanced equipment so that we are on the same path with the international standards. Regarding the operation of G O P C or surgical theaters, we'd like to um enhance their job satisfaction. Some duties can be taken by other professionals such as nurses, otometrists. They can also share the workload with doctors. On technologies, through a clinical improvement system, for example, member asked about eye services. There are many services that cannot be conducted in the system. So with the um new system, we can incorporate the system into the clinical record system. So ophthalmologists can also work in this regard.
Now, for those specialists, um that with the higher wastage rate, uh are you taking a targeted approach to deal with that? Well, I was explaining that the members asked about ophthalmology. Uh maybe im-ophthalmologists, they will not gonna need to uh do charts and so on that will help lessen the workload, so these are targeted measures. Miss Connie Lam. Thank you, Chairman. A number of questions. First, um for the G B A pilot scheme for a healthcare voucher scheme. Now, it's going to be implemented in the third quarter this year, so how many cases will involve the use of the vouchers? What's your estimation? And if elderly patient uh um patients encounter any medical disputes with the use of vouchers, is there any protection? Second question is about mental health. Now, for students and young people uh at risk, um uh it's hoped that support could be given to them as soon as possible. Now, there's a three-tier system and ref measures will um be, will be in place until the end of the year. So what other measures are there in place to support the mental health of young people? And then third is on reply one one three. Uh that's the mental health support hotline eighteen one eight uh one one one. Now, it said that in past eleven months, you've received over twenty-one thousand calls and twenty calls were referred to the police for follow-up. And then there were two emergency cases that had to be handled at once. So what are considered emergency cases? Will there be a follow-up on the cases after referral? Finally, my question on Chinese medicine. Now, in my constituency, Changguanou, we're gonna see the commissioning of the Chinese medicine hospital. Will the hospital work with mainland Chinese medicine hospitals or international research institutes so we could further promote G B A Chinese medicine collaboration? What specific uh measures are there? Well, you asked four questions, but I'll watch the time. Let's see how many questions you can take, Professor. Uh first, about the number using the um G B A pilot scheme, um elderly vouch, healthcare vouchers. Well, um we are watching the scheme closely because it's a pilot scheme, but we won't set um cap on the number of um elderly persons who use the vouchers in G B A. This is an option we offer to them. For mainland hospitals, there are new um medical institutes included in the list and these are, you know, um top, very good hospitals in terms of quality and capacity. We believe they are more than able to um meet the needs of elderly persons in, in the G B A. Uh on the mental health support hotline, I'll ask Mister Lee, Deputy Secretary, uh Mister Edili, Mister Deputy Secretary, you take that question. Uh we, on a collaboration of the Chinese medicine hospital in Hong Kong with the mainland, while there are an agreement has been signed with the reference Guangdong Hospital. Uh there will be exchange of talents and two-way talent training and so on. So an agreement has been signed. Mister Lee. Yeah, on the three-tier, uh three levels of community psychiatric services, um we ex, we've extended that to the end of the year, so we have still about a year. Uh like any other pilot schemes, we then review the outcome and we'll see what follow-up measures are needed. Now, for the Department of Health and the Education Bureau, there are various schools-based programs rolled out. For example, the four-hour um school mental health charter that's just been introduced. And there's also a mental health for all at schools program and so on. So we are going to uh further promote um mental health education in schools. For the one eight one 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 mental health support hotline. Now, if uh those taking the calls identify um cases that are life-threatening, mo, in most cases, they are suicide cases, then they will be referred to the police for follow-up act, immediate follow-up action. Mister Chan Pu Lam. Oh two nine, my own question. Uh on mental health also, personnel and services. We see an increase in spending on he, mental health services uh in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five estimate compared to twenty nineteen. That's an increase of over twenty percent. Uh that's uh twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four estimates. And so that's an increase of twenty percent. But then there's a wastage rate of over six percent. Now, just now you uh gave reply to a similar questions. You say you're recruiting doctors from overseas and you're adopting various measures to address the shortage. It seems that the intake compared to the wastage uh is still um negative figure. So do you have um any more targeted measures to reduce the wastage rate to zero in the near future for healthcare professionals? And the other question is about service hours. Now, you see this, you say that there's been improvement in um service level. Uh but then say in Hong Kong East, um uh trend, the wait has um extended from sixteen weeks to twenty-five weeks. I cut new Chelsea C's, it was uh um it's now seventy weeks of waiting. So for um areas with a particular uh extended waiting time, um are, are you taking any measures? Uh ask Doctor Tony Ko to take the questions.
Yes, uh on wastage rate, yes, it's um high, but then we're seeing a drop in the wastage rate.
Yes, uh, on wastage rate, yes, it's um high, but then we're seeing a drop in the wastage rate in recent days. As for the um net, um, there's actually a net increase. It's manpower now. It's a positive figure. So we hope that we'll continue to go up. Uh, so specialist outpatient services, SOP services. Now, um the waiting time is long is usually for the stable new cases. For the specialist outpatient clinic, there is a triage system. For the P, so-called P one, P two cases, the more emergency cases, the more urgent cases. We are able to fulfill our performance class to take um attend to all these cases in a timely manner. But then for other cases, the so-called stable cases, uh, there's no need for um um follow-up consultation so soon. That's why the waiting time is a bit longer. And um for others who don't actually need um specialist services. Uh, they, if they want to receive service, we'll still put them under the stable um class. And the past two policy addresses, we mentioned uh ENT, um orthopedic and other specialties. Uh, there's improvement in the waiting time. Now, for uh new cases, new referrals, um in the past year, there's from eight-hundred, over eight-hundred case, thousand cases. And um there's net increase of over four hundred thousand cases. So and there's um over reliance on specialist outpatient services is not desirable. And some will say, well, I I would just try to get a slot, no matter what, I'll just get in the queue first. So that's why there's this high net increase. And once people join the um S O P system, they don't want to leave even when their cases have stabilized. That's why we are, we need to um, you know, develop primary healthcare. Because in many cases should actually be under primary healthcare rather than um under specialist care. Mr. Lightong Kuo. Uh, reply two-four-four. Vacancies in dental clinics. In the appendix. We see there is a shortage of various types of um professionals. But then for medical laboratory. Or labro- laboratory attendant, there's some high vacancy. Uh, the the and twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, the vacancy rate is fifty percent. So out of eight posts four are vacant. Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, uh sixty-two point five percent vacancy rate, uh eight free. Only um three out of eight posts are filled, and then twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, the waste, the vacancy rate is seventy-five percent, only two posts are filled out of eight. So uh do you have difficulties uh hiring the laboratory attendants? Or is it um a grade you're trying to face up? Because there are just two persons, out, out, two posts out of eight taken up. How can you manage? And then next, uh, a reply oh-two-two. Uh, tobacco and alcohol control office, there's a figure twenty-three, twenty-four. They, on average each year, the um uh funding is one hundred million dollars. And twenty-three, twenty-four is one hundred sixty million dollars, so an increase of sixty million dollars. So what's that additional resources for? And uh what have you achieved with the additional resources? Uh, Dr. Ronald Lamb, the Director of Health, will take the two questions. Dr. Lamb, please. Um laboratory attendant, now in dental care services, uh, in a support structure. Uh, we have this um central dental uh laboratory or laboratory. Uh, if you've sought dental care services, you will know what it's about. That is about um, you know, doing the uh um dental um modes and so on. So we, that's why we have this um uh post, that this um office. And then the med- laboratory attendants, uh, support staff. Of the Hong Kong Central Dental Laboratory. Now, uh, for the time being, the service provided by Central Laboratory is not affected by the vacancies. In the laboratory attendance, but in the long run, we see if we need to take any measures, so we'll take a look at that. Uh, taco, you know, additional funding of sixty million dollars. The tobacco and alcohol control office taco. Uh, we have stepped up our smoking cessation services. Now, there are um multi-pronged approach and there are multiple channels in providing a service, so there's a stronger demand. Especially last year, we increased the tobacco duty, so there, we saw more people seeking uh smoking cessation services. So that's why we need to provide more support for the quit line. And uh also, we need to engage more NGOs to provide services, and so that's why there's additional funding. For enforcement, as you know. Um, uh, public housing states people distributing leaflets on illicit cigarettes. So that's why we have stepped up um collaboration with other departments on enforcement actions. Next, Mr. Lam Chang Sing.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my question. H B B, H H B O nine-three, about manpower of Chinese medicine. There was a decrease in the number of subsidized Chinese medicine programs from seventeen-nine to seventy. But then you put Chinese medicine practitioners in the talent list. They can be imported into Hong Kong, but I don't think that's very effective. There may not be many people outside Hong Kong that have Chinese medicine practice and qualifications and can practice in Hong Kong right away. There's an increase of Chinese medicine practitioners to a total of um four hundred and fifty-seven. So when the Chinese medicine hospital is commissioned next year, will there be tight manpower resources? Affecting the manpower in eighteen C M clinics? In the long run. Will you increase the number of bachelor programs in Chinese medicine? At least. You need to provide seventy-nine places like a couple of years ago. Regarding Ms. Connie Lam's question one-one-three, that's the um one-eight triple-one mental health support hotline. Two hundred cases have been referred to the relevant centers. Two cases have been referred to the police for follow-up. Ms. Connie Lam has already asked about these two cases, but I'm concerned about the remaining cases, and that is the vast majority of the cases. Were they about general inquiries? Or? Their emotions have become stable? Or because of a lack of manpower, referral cannot be made? The hotline has been in place for three to four months, so I'd like to follow up on the progress. Regarding Chinese medicine, I'd like to ask Mr. Edidie to take these questions. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Member. Regarding manpower of Chinese medicine, we have been keeping a close watch on it. We not only train C M practitioners from the three universities in Hong Kong. There are also two hundred or so C M students. They study in the mainland and then they take the licensing examination in Hong Kong. So we can see we have a sufficient supply of Chinese medicine practitioners. Regarding one-eight triple-one mental health support online. As we mentioned, there were two cases requiring emergency referral. Those are about matters of life and death, so we need to refer these cases to the police. But in general, this support hotline. Takes many calls. About minor emotional issues. When trained professionals take these calls, they can already deal with the situation. We have already referred two hundred cases to social welfare organizations. Or I C C M W for follow-up. So the operation is smooth. We have um thirty hotlines. They operate round the clock. So overall, the operation of one-eight-one-one-one is smooth. Next, Professor Priscilla Leng. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my two questions, one-six-one and one-six-five. One-six-one. It's about the D X C in eighteen districts. In one of her replies. You mentioned family doctor for all. That is implementation details. Right now, we have three thousand seven hundred doctors providing these services. I'd like to ask about public-private partnership, P P P. Will specialists be included? What about your cooperation with insurance companies? Many elderly people aged sixty or above, when they retire, they can't afford medical insurance services. Some only need to pay the premium to seventy years old. The requirements are very stringent. So I'd like to ask about whether there is any link between the concept of family for all and medical insurance companies. We encourage elderly people to go to the G B A for retirement. Can G B A doctors be included as well? This is my first question. My next question is about H H B one-six-five. You gave us very good figures. I'd like to commend your efforts and your reply. Your reply is indeed very good. For the waiting time of specialist services on Hong Kong Island, for example, for orthopedic. It may take longer, that is five weeks. In Kowloon West, for ophthalmology cases, it takes one hundred and sixty-one weeks. Will you probably redeploy the cases to other districts? Questions on two fronts, four questions in total. One about family doctor for all and primary healthcare. I'd like to ask my colleague, Dr. Pang. To take this question and Dr. Tony Co for other questions. Dr. Pang, please. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding P P P. For the C D C C pilot scheme, that includes, that includes blood tests and medications. We constantly review the scheme to see how we can make enhancements. We also work with different specialists in the um H A. There were referral mechanisms. We are actively reviewing the scheme and the mechanism. But because that concerns not only about doctor consultations, that also involves the provision of drugs and tests. So in the community, community drug register, we will consider expanding the register. Regarding medical insurance. Among three thousand doctors or so, five hundred doctors are. Um, taking part in the C D C C pilot scheme. We're trying to work with different large companies and in, and insurance companies. We are identify, identifying collaboration opportunities. So that will be included in the primary healthcare blueprint. Dr. Tony Co?
Thank you, Chairman. About specialist outpatient clinic services. When patients go to specialist O P C. On the spot. There are displays or display screens showing, for example, in Park Oil Hospital. It may tell you, you will get a faster slot when you um book a slot in Two Moon Hospital. For Curtis Medical Center, Ophthalmology Center. This hospital was the hardest hit. Many services needed to be suspended because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Hong Kong Eye Hospital also helped with ophthalmology cases, so this effect, this me- this mechanism is effective. Next, Mr. Reng Kong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on H H B O seven-nine. That's about our aging population. In Hong Kong. The population is rapidly aging. I'd like to ask about the service demands in this regard. I'd also like to ask what plans the H A has. Well, the administration gave us a reply that is at a micro level. I have two questions. You've given us very detailed replies. In your reply of three pages, it seems to focus is on health. You didn't focus on enhancing well-being. That is, we need to be healthy, but we also need to have well-being. In developed economies. They already elevate the level of health to health and well-being. We need to be concerned about the well-being of the elderly. As well as their concerns. We have um singleton elderly people in Hong Kong. So what contract measures do you have to take care of the well-being of the elderly? How will you deploy your resources to work on this? Next on dementia. I'm no expert in this area, but after reading the information in the reply. It seems not many resources are devoted to the prevention and the treatment of dementia. Can you give us more information? Thank you, Secretary. We have an aging population. Our focus is on prevention. Indeed, we need to focus more on prevention. Many chronic diseases can be prevented. That's also our focus of primary healthcare. Especially the C D C C pilot scheme. We have already factored in the use of resources. That is how we can target patients we need to provide treatment for. We want to target the disadvantaged or people with serious illnesses. We want to devote resources to this category of patients. Regarding waiting time, I will ask Dr. Tony Co to give you more information. Regarding dementia. When it comes to treatment, there's no very effective measure or treatment plan. Without doubt. Dementia is a common problem in our rapidly aging population, but there's no effective treatment right now. When it comes to prevention, it's not all about medications. We need to start with our life. That is how we can prevent dementia. For other questions, Dr. Tony Co, please. Thank you, Chairman. On taking care of the elderly. We may understand that with an aging population, there are many chronic disease patients. So it's very important to provide treatment services to the elderly. Many elderly people have more than one illness. For example, when an elderly person is admitted to the hospital, probably an elderly person falls down. There may be geriatric departments, orthopedic departments, and allied medical healthcare professions and so on. Mr. Reng Kong also mentioned elderly singletons. In the community. We also work with the S W D. There were geriatric outreach teams and so on. We have services like this. Next, Mr. Tony Che.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the reply, H H B. O-O-one and O-O-three. O-one-five and two-one-one. For O-O-one and O-O-three. For Kowloon Central Cluster, that is Kwangwa Hospital and Queen Elizabeth Hospital. For triage one critical cases, there were over five thousand cases, accounting for one-fourth of the total number in Hong Kong. For triage one critical cases, there were over five thousand cases, accounting for one-fourth of the total number in Hong Kong. In oh oh three, it mentions wastage. The wastage rate is very high. What measures does the administration have in relation to manpower distribution? Healthcare manpower. We have a total of seven clusters. What have you done? So that these two hospitals in the Kowloon Central Cluster will have sufficient manpower to deal with the cases, especially in triage one critical cases. Regarding oh one five. That is the development of Chinese medicine in Hong Kong. There are a total of two thousand one hundred and thirty-six listed Chinese medicine practitioners. Those who are qualified can become registered CM practitioners. So how does the administration help them? Is there any time limit? Well, is there actually no time limit or is there any time limit? So that eligible or qualified CM practitioners can become registered practitioners in Hong Kong. I'd like to follow up on HHB two one one. That's about tackle. For those below the age of fifteen, warning letters may be issued. I'd like to know the effectiveness of warning letters. That is, you don't just go through the motion. Do you follow up on the effectiveness of the warning letters? Do you take any other actions as well? For example, do they need to have counseling sessions, for example? Three questions. First question, I'll ask Dr. Tong Niko. The second question, Mr. Eddie Lee, please. The third question, Dr. Ronald Lam, please. Dr. Tong Niko, please. Thank you Chairman. In Kowloon Central Cluster, Kwangwa Hospital and Queen Elizabeth Hospital, there's a huge demand in critical cases. We understand this. In different hospitals, the attendance figures may be similar. But there are many, many more ambulance cases in Queen Elizabeth Hospitals. Hence, a higher number of critical cases. We deploy manpower to work in the hospital to provide suitable support. A and E services are provided by not only A and E doctors. There are also other departments as well, such as medical departments, orthopedic departments, and so on. Different departments work together on one case. For example, QE Hospital, Kwangwa Hospital. The demand may be high, but then they can still handle the cases.
Chinese medicine, Mr. Eddie Lee. Thank you. For listed Chinese medicine practitioners, um, CMPs, uh, you know, this is transitional arrangement, given the history of CM in Hong Kong. Uh, we do have subsidized training schemes, uh, under certain funds. For those who want to receive training and become registered CMPs, there are uh, training schemes and funds available, funding scheme available. Dr. Ronald Lam, for younger persons who bridge the relevant tobacco control ordinance, uh, under age fifteen, we want to counsel them instead, so we keep in touch with the police on such cases. Mr. Edward Leng. One five oh, district health centers and these HC expresses. We see the participation rate is low and the costs are high. The operating costs are high, so three questions. One, say for Wan Chi, um, DHCE. Now, there are four thousand three hundred members so far. And the budget for the express is fifty-six million dollars, so it's thirteen thousand dollars per member. And by having membership means the passenger screen account there, maybe the member doesn't come to for activities often, so if it's not an active member, then the cost is even higher. So is it really ideal? Uh, can you achieve the relevant KPI? That's my first question. For these Cs and these CHEs. When they sign a cooperation agreement with you, you will give them a list of KPIs. The public are not aware of the KPIs because that's part of the contract. Now, we have so many DHCs and DHEs now. How many of them do not meet the KPIs? And then by November's year, eleven DCH contracts will expire. How are you going to do with that? Are you going to have a pub open tendering or do you plan to allow existing operators to renew the contract? Dr. Pang, who will take a question.
Now, for Wan Chi, it's a DCHE, that is a D, DHC express. Each year, the operating cost is about eleven million dollars. Um, the, in the past year or two, there's been increase in the number of members. But after the introduction of the CDCC pilot scheme, where we see that there are more uh, joining the DHEs after November last year. We will keep watching the KPIs and in the coming year, we're going to introduce new KPIs in new contracts. And some of the KPIs will be made public, so to public are able to gauge the performance of these DHCs and DHEs. As for uh, district health centers, there are seven of them. The last one was commissioned in twenty thirteen for a full range of services. Now, only one DHC has completed a three-year contract. As for other DHCs, they are at various stages of their contract, so after uh, three years, we will see how many have actually met the KPIs. And then we're also making changes to the contracts to include a relevant KPIs, in particular in relation to the CDCC pilot scheme and other health indexes. So again, when the performance, uh, 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 we will gauge a performance and then make that public. Now, for most HDCs, they, uh, there should be renewal of the contract at least once, and so in November this year, we're going to explore the contract renewal arrangement. For free. Um, these will become major DHCs next, when the contract expires and there'll be an open tendering. So for the eleven DHCs, even if they do not meet all the KPIs, you will renew the contract for them. Is that the case? Dr. Pang?
For the eleven DHCs, after they were commissioned. Now, um, there's a change in the positioning after the primary healthcare blueprint is introduced. So um, we have added new KPIs. And then, um, when, and the contract expires, then we will come, come, look at the KPIs. You mean there will be open tendering? For DHEs, we will then think about that. Three of the DCHEs, um, the, there will be, for three of them, there will be open tendering because they will be converted into DHCs for the other DHE. We haven't yet made a decision. So it's possible there could be a tendering. Next, Ms. Jovi Chen.
Uh, oh five two, reply oh five two, it's also on DHCs. I see that the cost compared to the manpower level, it doesn't, is not proportionate. Now, for the Trinwan DHCs, it's the largest, but in terms of support staff uh, level, that's the lowest. Um, why is that? And where have the costs gone? For oh seven seven, Mrs. Regine, you've also asked about DHCs, and I find that for Kuai Ching DHCs. Uh, it has the highest number of, um, uh, persons served. Um, in Hong Kong, three hundred seventy thousand. Um, three times that, um, uh, the, the number for the, um, um, uh, the other DHC with the second highest number. But then the, the cost given is not as much, so, so what is the, what are the criteria for the deciding cost? And oh five three, my question is the waiting time for specialist outpatient clinic services. Uh, figure is particularly high. Some member mentioned that already. In twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, Kowloon West's cluster, uh, it's a two hundred and twenty-five weeks of waiting for dental service. That's two and a half years. And then, uh, by twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, it's gone up to a hundred and sixty-seven weeks. Uh, or to, and then last year, or the year before rather, but then for last year, the figure has come down uh, by twenty-six weeks. Either you have doctor to figures or you have made some, taken some effective measures to shorten the waiting time. So what, what is it? For Kuai Ching, Kuai Chong DHC is the first DHC set up, so that's why it's more established. And as for the number of people, persons served is on a cumulative basis. So it's the earliest center opened in twenty nineteen. As for operating costs, it's on an annual basis. It's not cumulative. As for the other questions, I'll ask my colleagues to take them. The, Dr. Pang first on DHCs and DHEs. Now, for DHCs and DHEs in all eighteen districts, the number of members has gone up from a hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred thousand. Now, for Kuai Ching and Samshui Po, um, that's, um, they were set up about six on to nine months apart. And then, um, the DHC was set up at a time, at a peak of the COVID pandemic, so that's why service level was affected and now they're trying to ca- catch up. Now, since the launch of the CDCC pilot scheme, we're, we've seen a substantial increase in the number of members. As for, um, distribution of funds. Now, we go through a tendering process for NGOs to run a DHC. So, uh, of course, there is, um, an estimate figure, but then as long as they meet our service standards, then uh, we'll, and, and that's the basis, we select the operator, so. Um, so that's why operating cost depends on the amount tendered. Dr. Ko.
Kowloon West Cluster, uh, now the service actually provided at the Caritas Medical Center. It, um, it was substantially affected by the COVID pandemics, so that's why waiting time became longer. But then after that, we tried to keep, catch up by providing more services and so on. A lot of cases also tried to help. Why are we able to improve the waiting figure, the waiting time? Because that's a median figure, uh, isn't? So we redeployed a number of sessions, so they are seeing more patients and they are also um, diverting some patients and for others with a longer wait, we try to give them priority and so on. So we tried to catch up uh, because the, the, the impact was caused by COVID, and now we're trying to catch up and we're still working on that. Well, we're going to end the session at ten fifty. So the last member to ask questions is Mr. Tan Kapiu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really happy. I've been waiting so long. Two questions, uh, on behalf of, uh, you know, uh, two replies, uh, uh, two questions asked by FTU members. One is oh five five. Ms. Jovi Chen asked a question. Now, we, FTU has always asked for reform of the drug registration system so that we are able to use good drugs soon and at a low price. Now, there's seven drugs registered with the mainland registration regime. And now, um, twelve, the applications have been received and seven applications we see have been approved. But then out of these seven drugs approved, five, uh, uh, for treatment of COVID nineteen. So there are just two other drugs. They're actually similar, just that it's a different dosage. Why is that particular drug approved? What, what about the other drugs? What are the criteria for approving new drugs? Now, well, there are maybe some good drugs that can come to Hong Kong under this new registration regime, but then these may not be cheap drugs, although they are good. Maybe there is a certain drug that's used in Hong Kong, but then, uh, there's another drug developed in the mainland. The cost is lower, but then, uh, cost is not the reason for introducing a drug to Hong Kong, so can we, um, try, try to promote the use of good drugs at a lower price? I, I'm not so optimistic here. So what's the government's, um, take on that, uh, position on that? Next is, um, two seven three, reply two seven three, elderly, uh, the healthcare voucher. Um, there's a detailed reply from the administration. I think it's today. Uh, the Hong Kong Yu Shenzhen Hospital, uh, the voucher can be used, um, at the outpatient clinic in Longhua. And then, uh, the government's farmers to provide more dental service points. So when will you make an announcement? Now, in Shenzhen, we are seeing tens of thousands of cases of use of the healthcare vouchers. And is it the case that they are using less in Shenzhen compared to in Hong Kong, say, for western medicine service?
Secretary, I'll first take the question about healthcare vouchers. In Hua Hui, community outpatient clinic operation, um, since last April, healthcare vouchers could be used. Just now, we announced the trial service point scheme. Another five institutions and another two institutions providing dental services have been announced. We will implement the contract as soon as possible. We expect that these institutions will start to provide services in the third quarter. So the elderly people in the mainland can use their services. Regarding fees, the, um, average fee is three hundred or so. Comparing with the outpatient clinic services in the HA, it's quite difficult to make a comparison. The background and the conditions of the patients vary from one to another. When the patients use different healthcare vouchers in different specialist outpatient clinics, probably they will be using more medications. The specialist OPC of the HA is more extensive. It also provides different checkups. So it's difficult to make a direct comparison about the costs. But overall, three hundred dollars or so for each service. It's obviously more affordable than the private markets. Regarding the drug registry. It's about how the HA adopts these medications or when they will be included in the HADF. Dr. Ko, please.
We believe with the one plus mechanism, it will be beneficial to us. On the one hand, we have more sources. On the other hand, there will be competition as well. We are working closely with the DH. When there are applications coming in, we will immediately check the efficacy, safety of the medications with our expert panel. Cost-effectiveness also matters. Through competition, we believe this will be beneficial to the overall situation. The Hong Kong government supports clinical research. When we have more research for manufacturers overseas or in mainland or in Hong Kong, when Hong Kong can take part in more clinical research, we can also allow more medications to be used in Hong Kong. It's about time. Let's take a break. The next session will start at eleven o'clock. Thank you.